Today is April 26. This is a city council voting meeting. We're starting here at 3:05 PM. So Mayor Protim, do we have any announcements or introductions?
Well, yes, we do, Mayor Good. Let me get started here. The city of Prescott is a water smart community and outdoor watering habits make a big difference. Please remember that time of day watering guidelines are in fact are in effect from now through November 1st. So don't forget to water your yard between 8:00 at night and 8:00 in the morning. This saves water for Prescott and is the most efficient time to water your landscaping. Thank you for doing your part to live water smart. And by the way, the weatherman is predicting an average to above-average monsoon season. Let's hope that he's right. And next, this coming weekend, Prescott welcomes back the Whiskey Off-Road Mountain Bike Race. The city of Prescott is a sponsor for this big event. So come out and support our mountain bike community. This Friday at 5:00, be downtown on Cortez to see the racers do laps around the downtown. And then on April 30th, there will be live music on the Courthouse Plaza throughout the day. There are vendors and fun for the whole family on Whiskey Row and the plaza. And of course, don't forget to visit the Four Peaks Beer Garden. There will even be a free kids' ride on Sunday morning. For more details, go to epicrides.com. Also, help keep downtown Prescott beautiful by sponsoring a historic Kendall Jasper's Flower Basket. Downtown Prescott blossoms with 30 different hanging baskets throughout the downtown. Contact the Prescott Downtown Partnership at 928-443-5220 and speak to Audra or email preskittdowntown.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. We'll move on to an invocation from Pastor Dan Halbert at Prescott United Methodist Church, and then Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Hall.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we thank you for this day, for the beauty of the earth, and for the gift of new life that springs forth all around us. Today, we pray over the Crook's Fire. We pray for the safety of life and property. We pray for the firefighters on the land and in the air. Keep them safe and help us find ways to show our true appreciation. We are grateful for those whom you have called to serve this city, for our mayor and our council members. Guide them with your wisdom. For our staff and administrative personnel, give them stamina to deal with the day-to-day challenges of their vocation. We give you thanks for the working people of our city, especially all who contribute to our tax base. Help us to be wise stewards of these hard-earned resources. Bless us by your presence in this meeting, in our homes and in our lives. Let us be a shining example of your grace, peace, and love for all whom we meet. In the name of your risen son, we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protim Rusing.
Here.
Councilwoman Hall.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenny.
Yes.
All are present.
Thank you. We will move on to proclamations today. We have a proclamation for Fair Housing Month. Councilman Moore, would you like to present that? Do we have any representatives here for fair housing?
Do you want to introduce yourselves?
My name is Sheri Horvath. I'm with Southwest Fair Housing Council.
My name is Michelle Chavez. I'm with the city of Prescott Community Development Black Grant Program.
And I'm Bryn Stotler, Director of Community Development.
Thank you. Thank you for being here today. This is the proclamation for Fair Housing Month, April 2022. Whereas the year 2022 marks the 54th anniversary of the passage of the Federal Fair Housing Act Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, and whereas the Civil Rights Act of 1968 guarantees that housing in and throughout the city of Prescott and the United States of America should be made available to all citizens without regard to race, color, religion, national origin, age, sex, familial status, or disability, and whereas illegal barriers to equal opportunity in housing, no matter how subtle, diminish the rights of all and only with the cooperation, commitment, and support of the city of Prescott can barriers to the employment of housing choice be removed. Now therefore, be proclaimed that Prescott shares the vision for equal housing opportunities of all residents in the city and hereby joins in the national celebration of proclaiming April 2022 as Fair Housing Month. Would you like to say anything?
We want to plug your call. Sure. We wanted to make just a short announcement. We have actually a fair housing workshop tomorrow, right here in city council chambers and via Zoom. We will be here tomorrow morning to offer anybody who's interested in learning more about fair housing, getting up on the latest information, and Sheri will be teaching that class. And so the council chamber doors will be open at 8:30 tomorrow morning, and we'll start the class at 9:00.
And I come with goodies, so come in person.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we'll open, we'll move on to the open call to the public.
City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address council regarding matters not included on the posted agenda during the open call to the public. Please complete a green speaker card and submit to the city clerk prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total. I do have one public speaker card today from Jay Ruby.
Thank you, council and mayor. Earlier, climate change was the topic in an assessment, and I think it's clear from that presentation that to protect taxpayers and homeowners in Prescott, we need to address it effectively and without hesitation. As an example of what an effective climate change assessment program within the city of Prescott could be like, I'm going to highlight a current project from the Department of Public Works, whose, I believe, mistakes, cost increases, and negative climate impacts could have been prevented with oversight from an organization like Protect or Prescott Creek's Preservation Association. This is the result of the sewer line replacement and implementation at Miller Valley Creek or Miller Creek between Lincoln Avenue and the new apartments off of Miller Valley Road. So what you see are Gabian baskets down here in the center of the creek, which goes down about four to six feet, and over here on the left are Reno blankets. These are basically wire cages, stones in wire cages, replacing what was a tree-lined creek bank. This was a creek bank full of trees. Right here. That is the replacement of the creek with Miller Valley. The confluence of Butte Creek and Miller Creek was previously bordered by cottonwood trees, box elders, and a strong weave of grasses, providing cooling shade and erosion control. When I asked the workers from Fan Construction what the remediation plan was for the creek, they said, "This is it." Is what we see here what we get? Instead of a vibrant riparian Prescott Creek, our city's Department of Public Works has left us with the denuded landscape posing as a wannabe Los Angeles aqueduct, which is operating as a heat sink, a haven for invasive plant species. It provides no shade, and it is ultimately ineffective erosion control. Who provided and approved the plan for the post-reconstruction phase of this project? Was there a remediation plan for the creek after construction? Did city council have input, or was it left to the discretion of the engineers at Fan Construction? Was any thought given to the impact on local property owners, or to how a greenway could enhance the value of the neighborhood, to whether this project is moving towards carbon neutral? A carbon-neutral approach, like what was proposed earlier through the climate assessment, would have been more cost-effective, increased local property values, diminished energy costs, and retained the beauty and spirit of the place. Why didn't we do this? Did anyone ask critical environmental questions as part of the sewer project's process? Was anyone with an environmental or climate perspective part of the conversation? We need a public climate watchdog guarding our community interests and tax dollars. Protect and Prescott Creek's Preservation Association are both informed about climate change applications and environmental remediations. They could make recommendations and provide solutions that lead us to cost-saving, carbon-reducing, and quality-of-life-enhancing decisions. I urge city council to make public works review processes more transparent and to empower a public climate watchdog to safeguard the interests of taxpayers, homeowners, and the general public. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to the city of Prescott moving in the right direction towards a carbon-neutral future and with counsel from organizations like Protect and Prescott Creek's Preservation Association.
Thank you, Mr. Ruby. Do we have any additional comments?
That's all, Mayor.
Okay. All right, we will now move on to our consent agenda. Does anyone plan on pulling an item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items A8A through A8J.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussions? Please vote.
Sorry.
Pass the 7-0.
I hit the wrong button.
Too much coffee.
All right, we'll now move on to the regular agenda. Item 9A is the legislative update.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Tyler Goodman with the city manager's office here with your legislative update. And honestly, in the past two weeks, not much has changed. If you read through the update, you saw that the status of all the bills that we have on our tracking list here has remained the same. Everything's pretty much paused while the legislators are negotiating a budget. And you may have noticed, if you're following very closely, that the House Appropriations Committee attempted to pass what's called a skinny budget, which all those bills failed. And a skinny budget is basically taking the current year's budget, maybe putting in some inflation factor into it, and trying to pass that so they can get out of the legislative session. That's failed, and I know that the leadership in the legislature, the governor, they want to incorporate the huge surplus, which is about $5 billion, into this budget to try to tackle some of the things that we're seeing. Arizona Water Authority, education has come up, and several other larger things. So with that, they're still negotiating. I don't have much more to add, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Well, I noticed that the Arizona League's Legislative Update Call every Monday morning was canceled this week for exactly those reasons. So the fight over the budget continues, and because the massive amount of surplus funds in the state coffers, I think, is contributing to the fight over moving the budget forward with, I think, so many individual legislators up there knowing that they might be able to leverage their own district's interests, trying to access some of those additional funds, although a lot of people think that that's a great deal. But it turns out it's probably contributing to more infighting down at the legislature than ever. Any other comments or questions? Any public comment on that one?
No, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Tyler. I'm sure you'll keep a, continue to keep a close eye on that, and we'll see how things progress.
Thank you.
What day is this on the legislature?
Oh, I've lost track. You know, honestly, that depresses me to follow that, so I don't keep particular attention to that one. But I can find out and let you know.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to item 9B.
Adoption of Resolution Number 2022-1812, Setting the Policy for Contracts with City Officials and City Employees for 2022 to 2023.
Thank you, mayor and council. This is an annual resolution that we bring forward to the council, setting a policy for contracts with city officials or city employees. Arizona law is unique in that it does provide a kind of nominal amount of provisions of services or goods that elected officials, city officers, or employees can provide to the city, short of competitive bidding. It's a $1,000 annual amount that can be done, and each transaction cannot be more than $300. I know Mr. Woodville, is he here? Mark was going to provide us with some information on how often this particular policy is used. It used to be a little more common. My sense is it was set as a statute to help actually more rural jurisdictions where there may be not as much help to provide services or goods outside of a smaller population pool. But Mark, what are we looking at there?
Thank you so much, Mr. Prudraki. Mark Woodville, Budget and Finance Director. I guess I'm providing content here.
Text.
There is, yeah, context. There really, we do track this in accounts payable, obviously, as we pay things. It's part of our annual audit process. The auditors want to know, they want to know all the related party transactions that there are. Again, it's not important until it's needed type of thing, and the community are sometimes limited vendors, and you do have to do work with employees that have outside businesses or employee spouses that have outside business. So it's not just an employee. If your spouse owns a business, for them to do business with the city, this needs to be in place, and the guidelines provide to that. I'd be glad to answer any additional details, but it is something we track.
Any questions or concerns?
Yes.
Mayor Protim?
Yes, I do. I looked at this, and on the very last sentence in our packet, it says, "Or alternatively, allow a city official or employee to contract with the city in excess of those statutory amounts if public competitive bidding is utilized."
Correct. So if any amount is above that, that an official or an employee can bid on something, and they would just follow our typical procurement practices, and Mark can kind of run you through those, but I think if it's up to $10,000, you have to get three competitive bids.
Well, it's, and again, this is a stricter guidance than regular vendors. Current procurement practice is zero to five. There's, competitive bids are not required, but most economic approach should be used. Five to 25, three written competitive bids. 25 to 50, three written competitive bids with council approval of the successful bidder, and over 50 is actually sealed bids, which has a complete, very difficult process or time-consuming process.
So is this something new, or is this something that we've always been able to do?
State law requires us to do it every year, and it has for years.
Okay.
It was new to this council, so we took it off the consent agenda, just to kind of give you a flavor of some of the things that are out there.
See it again next year.
Now, being said, if a city employee or a city official were to bid on something, of course, the conflict of interest law requires them to declare a conflict and not participate in the decision-making process.
So it's already, it's already a law?
Yeah, it's a law. This is, for some reason, state statute requires that you adopt it every year.
So theoretically, if, say, perchance, Mr. Mike Fan gets elected to city council, he can still bid on his own, on city projects?
He just wouldn't be able to participate in the decision. Same as if an employee.
Recuse himself.
Was involved, their spouse with the business, they can't be involved in managing that contract or selecting that bid or anything, conflict of interest. Our procurement code requires that be separated.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Montoya.
Mark, I just have a quick question. You said you keep track of these for the purposes of audit.
Yes.
How many did we have last year?
We had, I don't think, we had one close. It didn't actually qualify. It was an employee's sister.
Okay. Okay. So it's not something, it's not something that comes up very often, then, is what I'm going to say?
No. Like I say, it does come up when there are products or services that can, you know, that, you know, it's a small town, short of just buying everything online.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I can't think of too many examples. One that I recall is we had a, and she's no longer here, a staff member who was a professional photographer, and she took photographs, I think of the council, maybe, and where it would have cost us more money to go out, she said, you know, "I'll do it, but, you know, cover my costs," which were under $300 bucks. So that's kind of where you see it.
Yeah.
Occasionally. I can't think of others off the top of my head, but it's pretty rare.
Thank you, Mark. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Adoption of Resolution Number 2022-1812, Setting the Policy for Contracts with City Officials and City Employees for 2022 and 2023.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 6-1.
Very good. We'll move on to item 9C.
Approval of City Contract Number 2022-197, An Employment Contract with a New City Attorney.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. I'm Brandon Nunez, the new HR director. Please be gentle, it's my first time. I'm here to present the city contract for our new city attorney, Mr. Joseph Young, and I wanted to answer any questions you had about the contract that we presented.
Do we have any questions or concerns?
I'll just make.
Councilman Montoya.
I'll just make a comment, Mayor. I don't really have any questions or concerns, because I think everyone on this council body participated in the interview process for this gentleman, and so I don't think that, I think he's been well-vetted at this point. So I'm excited to move forward with finally replacing our city attorney. No offense, Matt.
Well, if you're excited, I'm really excited.
I think we have a very, very well-qualified city attorney applicant, and we did have a little back and forth on the terms of the contract, but I think we have a very satisfactory agreement here and financial package that I think will not only encourage and attract Mr. Young, but be able to give him a lot of assurances that with continued excellent performance, we can rely on having a city attorney here for quite a long time. Councilman Tenny.
I just want to underscore what Councilman Montoya shared. I appreciate that you've shared with the public that we've been a part of this process from the beginning, and so there's probably not a lot of questions there. There may be some public comment or question regarding the salary. This is going to be one of the higher-paid people in Prescott. On the one hand, that's probably true. On the other hand, as you suggested, it's a very competitive benefits and salary package. Being from the HR world myself, I know that there are a lot of folks doing similar jobs throughout the state who are getting paid a lot more than this. This is a pretty good value for the city of Prescott, I feel, based on Mr. Young's qualifications. We're excited to have him join us. Another piece that occurs to me as I think about that whole piece, what it's costing the city is what it would cost the city to have a mistake of significant import made by a county attorney going forward. That we might be saving ourselves many times this by getting someone who's qualified. And I think that's what we're doing.
Indeed. Thank you, Councilman Tenny. Do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve City Contract Number 2022-197.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Terrific. Well, wherever you are, Mr. Young, welcome to the city of Prescott.
I think he's in trouble.
All right, we'll move to item 9, whatever, are we at 9D?
Approval of City Contract Number 2022-200, With Titan Power for IT Data Center Electrical and HVAC Engineering Equipment and Installation.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Nate Keegan, IT Director. I'm going to keep this pretty short and sweet. This is the second of three parts to this project. You saw the last one a couple weeks ago when I was babbling about kittens and puppies and stuff. What you see in this package is essentially the electrical and HVAC nuts and bolts, and we wanted to get this items ordered as they're going up dramatically in price day by day, and in some cases, hour by hour, where you have vendors who will not quote you price until they're literally shipping it on the trucks. So with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions or clarify anything in the write-up.
Councilman Montoya.
Nate, this isn't really a question, it's just more of a comment. I just want to highlight, I think I did this in my email that I sent to Michael when I was going over the packet earlier this week, but I appreciate the detail and clarity that you put into your staff memos, because it really highlights, in your case, sometimes very technical issues that are not easy to parse for people who have no experience in the IT landscape. And so I just, I appreciate, as silly as your kitten and puppy metaphor was, it does help that you're willing to kind of go the extra mile and provide detail around these things. So thank you for doing that.
Absolutely. We appreciate that.
I know kittens and puppies.
Other questions or concerns? Do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor.
No.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Go ahead, Brandon. I move for approval of City Contract Number 2022-200.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, moving on to item 9E.
Public Hearing Regarding the City of Prescott Draft 2022 CDBG Annual Action Plan to Accept CDBG Entitlement Funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the approximate amount of $251,857. Approve the 2022 CDBG Annual Action Plan and authorize staff to submit it to HUD and close the public hearing.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Bryn Stotler, Director of Community Development. While Michelle is getting her presentation ready, I thought I'd do a little bit of introduction on our CDBG program. For those council members who are newer and may not be as familiar, the city of Prescott is what's called a CDBG entitlement community. That's HUD language. We didn't choose it. It doesn't mean zoning entitlement, doesn't mean Medicare entitlement. Anyway, HUD chose that, and we are a part of what is called their entitlement program. The city gets a small pot of money every year, about $250,000. It's not a lot, but we make it go far. And we are in about the midpoint of our grant cycle right now, and it's kind of exciting because at this time of the year, we get to come before you guys and reflect all of the good work that our Citizens Advisory Committee does, and also present to you the applications that have come forward and been recommended awards under our CDBG allotment for this year. So without further ado, I will introduce Ms. Michelle Chavez, who is our capable grant coordinator, and she will unload the details. Thank you, Bryn. Good afternoon, mayor and council members again. Michelle Chavez, I'm the Community Development Black Grant Coordinator for the city of Prescott. Been seeing most of you before, but every year, the city is required to submit an annual action plan to HUD on how we're going to spend our community block grant dollars. So you all had seen in the staff report that I put together kind of a timeline of where we're at in regards to the process. So as Bryn said, we have this wonderful seven-member community advisory committee that meets every month to talk about the program. They review applications for grant funds. They give me recommendations on the reporting that I have to do for the federal government. And so actually, this process started way back in October of 2021. We actually, based on feedback from the council and the mayor, we added a workshop to get more people engaged and interested in the program. So we started the process way back in October of 2021 with our first-ever needs workshop. We had about 37 people. And we had about 37 people attend that. Then we had, on December, our applications opened and we had an application workshop in December, where we had 38 people attend that workshop. So it's both in person and via Zoom. And then after the applications come in, our citizen advisory council reviews all the applications and then they meet to make a recommendation to us on what we should fund. So included in your packet talks about, we did visit, we went in person to a couple of the construction applications. We visited the VA where US Vets is working on a project to rehab low-income veterans homes in the old officers' quarters, which is a super cool project. And we also visited the Community Nature Center, which is a city of Prescott application to pave all of the pathways in that park. So after that, the, the committee met and they voted on what they thought should be, should be funded. And they made that recommendation and that goes into this action plan. So in your packet, you had the full action plan with all of the reporting that's required on past projects and this current project, as well as the spreadsheet that shows what the proposed projects will be. So every year, we get around $250,000. It varies, it doesn't vary radically. We do everything as an estimate until we get our final grant official award from HUD. So all of the grantees are told, this is contingent upon our final grant award and it may be a little bit more, it may be a little bit less, but this is what our experience has been over the last several years. We're only allowed to spend a certain type of funding. So in the chart, I show that 65% has to be spent on construction, 20% on admin and 15% on public service. We're not allowed to deviate from that pool for our entitlement funds. So again, we started marketing in October. We added the needs workshop. So it's about a five-month process till, before it gets to you all to make the final decision. We had three new applicants this year. One was recommended for funding and that's Matforce. We are doing a new minor home repair program for low-income residents, which was in last year's annual action plan, but we're actually going to kick it off this year. Again, I spoke about the nature trails at the Community Nature Center and the new housing for low-income veterans at the VA campus. Those are kind of new things. What's kind of ongoing and continued projects that you've seen before are the transportation for low-income and disabled residents through New Horizons and People Who Care, the job training and placement for low-income youth students at Arizona Serve of Prescott. Big Brothers Big Sisters has been a past award recipient. They are going to be applying for a needs assessment to serve older youth, 18 to 24, and then peer mentoring for seniors at Polara Health. So these are all agencies who've been funded in previous years and are coming back for either new or expanded projects. So again, in your packet was the, the worksheet with all of the grant distributions, including the ask, the match that's required in the community. We had approved Agape House last year for a three-year funding, excuse me, so they will also be awarded this year for a three-year renovation of a nine-unit apartment building for formerly homeless families. So we had six public service recommended for funding in 2022 and three construction recommended for funding in 2022. So the next steps will be to get your approval hopefully today and then submit it to HUD for approval. I have to enter it in and all of the, kind of the nice PDF that you guys have received in your packet, I have to enter all that data into the federal website to say what we're going to do with the money and report on what we've done over the past, our past year's funding. Then after that, we have to do environmental reviews, we have to do bids. As Mark was saying earlier, there's a process for any kind of purchasing that we do, we have to follow the city's procurement policy and then hopefully have signed agreements in place by July 1st of 2022. And I will now open it up for questions.
Thank you, Michelle. Very good. I know when I was the council liaison to CDBG, I was a little bit concerned because it seemed like every year, the same organizations would submit for funding. And I wanted to make sure that the broader community understood that some of these funds were available. And I think we've started to achieve that goal by encouraging some new applicants. So I think that veterans renovation over on the VA campus is going to be a very, very valuable one for our veterans community. Matforce being new here, I think is also a good new applicant. I did have one question about Polara Health and their senior peer mentoring. Can you describe what that is?
Yes, mayor, thank you for asking that question. So they have in the past been a recipient of CDBG funds and it is to provide peer mentoring for seniors who, so that they are not living in isolation. And they do some onsite workshops in person at Polara Health with seniors who are in the community. And also they do some home visits. So it's actually people who are seniors, older adults, working and being connected with other older adults. And they found that there's a significant need in the community for those type of services.
Very good. Mayor Protem.
Oh, I just wanted to comment that the amount doesn't vary year to year. It's pretty much about $250,000.
Correct.
You can count on that then.
Yes, Mayor Protem. So typically, we've seen it vary within a few thousand dollars. So it may be a little bit, maybe $3,000 to $5,000 more, $3,000 to $5,000 less. It's typically not a radical change year to year.
Okay. Well, that helps with planning. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions or concerns? Do we have any public comment?
No, mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept CDBG entitlement funds in the approximate amount of $251,857 from HUD.
We're going to take these one at a time, mayor. There looks like there's three motions.
All right, so motion number one. There it was.
Second.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the first recommended action. Please vote.
Passes seven, zero.
And, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the 2022 CDBG annual action plan and authorize staff submitted to HU HUD.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on action number two. Please vote.
Passes seven, zero.
And, Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second on action number three. Please vote.
Passes seven, zero.
All right, well, that concludes that one. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
All right, now we move to item number F.
Approval of city contract number 2022-175 with Fan Contracting, Inc. for the Penn Avenue Eastwood Drive Improvements Project.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Tim Sherwood, Public Works. The first item I have for you today is the Penn Avenue Eastwood Drive Improvement Project. The project includes Penn Avenue from Gurley to approximately Carlton and Eastwood Drive from Carlton up through Nevada up to, and continues onto Deveraux, as well as the three intersecting cul-de-sacs, which are David, Daniel, and John Dry, or circles. Work includes water and sewer replacements, removal reconstruction of severely distressed asphalt, and construction of new curb gutters and sidewalks where we can do it. The upper area of Eastwood does not lend itself to new sidewalks. Third-party utility relocations were performed during 2019, 2020. The engineer record updated the design plans to reflect those, so they're implemented in our construction plans. This project also includes a regional detention basin right in approximately this area here, right near Carlton and Hillcrest, that will help alleviate downstream flooding issues down Rush Street, all the way down into Yopai College. Yopai County Flood Control District has $840,000 funded for FY23 for the city of Prescott and will use that money to help fund the drainage work that's on this project. Our project was advertised in February of 2022. We received two bids on March 24th. Public Works is recommending the award of the low bid to Fan Contracting in the amount of $10,947,777. Staff has received written confirmation from Fan Contracting. Verification of their licensing, bonding, references, and past performance of previous municipal projects has been completed and deemed satisfactory. The city's standard construction contract will be used for this project and funding for the project is budgeted in FY22 from Streets, Water, Wastewater, and Yopai County Flood Control District funds. And with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you, Tim. Mayor Protem Rusi.
Thank you. I have some questions about the detention basin. On the map, it looks pretty impressive. Do you know how many cubic feet it's going to be?
I don't know exactly how many cubic feet it is. It's significantly larger than the one we did at Acker Park just a few years ago, which we've had great success with as far as how it impacts Virginia Creek. But I do not have the number for you off the top of my head.
Is it just going to be a, like a big dirt pit or is it going to be?
No, it'll have, it'll have some landscape features as well as erosion control features as well. There's a access path that can be used as recreational as well as operational to be able to get down to some of the features in there. So maintenance on the, on the storm drains and stuff like that, but also a recreational opportunity as well with the proximity to Acker Park.
Oh, thank you. So it won't just be a big giant eyesore for the neighbors to be looking down upon?
That's not our intent, no.
And then, thank you. And then also, my last question is, what happens to the dirt that's removed? Do we sell it or reuse it someplace?
There, in the bid documents, the, there's, it's just basically, they load it up and they haul it away.
Okay.
Where the contractor has chosen to take it this time, they have not revealed to us in any of the bid documents.
So he can just keep it?
Yes.
Okay. All righty, thank you.
Well, I know the people up there at Penn Eastwood have been very, 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 very patient.
Yes, sir.
Working on this project over the last several years, I know it's been a real challenge. A lot of people think it's just a, you know, a street repair, but it's a much bigger project than that, especially with this stormwater retention basin. So it's long overdue and I'm glad to see that we're finally moving forward with a, with a contract award. Do we have any other comments or questions? Any public comments?
No, mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on this one.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2022-175.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes seven, zero.
We're moving right along here. All right, we're moving now to item nine G.
Approval of multiple contracts for Chino Valley tank coating as follows. Number one, approval of city contract number 2022-187 to Professional Piping Systems, LLC, for the surface preparation and coating of the five MG Chino West tank project. And number two, approval of city contract number 2022-188 with RFI Consultants, LLC, for the Hold Point coating inspection services.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Tim Sherwood, Public Works again.
Good to see you again, Tim. Thanks.
Thank you, it's good to be here. As you see by the map, the city currently operates two 5 billion gallon tanks, steel water tanks located in our Chino water production facility. The original tank was put into service in 1993, which is the West tank that you see up there. And in, just to kind of commend its, its original construction, the tank was taken out of its service for the first time last fall. So from '93 to 2021, it was constantly being utilized. As part of the water production facility improvements, the tank was drained and is being retrofitted to match the East tank, which was constructed in 2017, which will help both tanks feed the, the new pump station, basically identical, they'll mirror each other. Work includes surface preparation of both the interior and exterior of the tank and a spray application of new tank coating inside and out. Project was advertised in March of 2022. We received eight bids on March 31st. Public Works is recommending award of the bid to Professional Piping Systems in the amount of $946,550. As you've seen in your packet, Professional Piping System was the third low bid on this project. The low bid of Riley, from Riley Industrial Services did not meet the requirements of the bid package. They submitted a 5% bid bond when a 10% bid bond is required. And the second, after reviewing their bid and going to the second low bid, Wilkinson Industrial is not licensed to do work in the state of Arizona. In the timeframe we have to work with, between the time bids are open, there's just not enough time to make that happen. So staff has received written confirmation of the bid from Professional Piping Services. Verification of their license, bonding, references, and past performance of previous municipal projects has been completed and deemed satisfactory. This project also includes the services of a National Association of Corrosion Engineers, or what we call NACE, Level Three Inspector. NACE inspectors are highly skilled and experienced in surface preparation, cleanliness, environmental conditions, test instruments, coating mixers, and safety. RFI Consultants was selective of this project based on their previous history with the city and success on other steel tank coating projects. And Public Works is recommending award of a contract for $32,148. The city's standard construction contract will be used for this project and funding for this project is budgeted in FY22 in the water fund.
Questions, concerns? Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I have a question. Of course, these, these tanks being steel, they're going to rust and they need to be coated. But since it involves our drinking water and taste and smell and health issues, what is, what is the coating and is it environmentally friendly, non-toxic?
It all has to be NSF certified, which is the, the standard for which potable water, anything that touches potable water, that is what, that has to meet those standards. We've had, the, the tank, like I said, right adjacent to it was built in 2017. We're using the same coating materials that we use in that tank that's been in service for four, going on five years now.
Okay. All righty, thank you.
Counselor Tenney.
So, Tim, I'm just curious, I'm fully in favor of this. On a lot of things that we put out to bed, we get one or two, or we feel fortunate if we get three bids. Looks like, like you said, eight of them here, a couple of them, you know, didn't meet our standards, but eight bids, any idea why there might have been so many? And then also, the difference between the low bid and the high bid is over four and a half times. And maybe you could comment on that based on your expertise and experience.
I wish I had a crystal ball to tell you why we had such a big discrepancy. It's, it's unusual. It really is to see something like that. Again, the eight bidders, this is a specialized application or specialized outfit that does stuff like this. You're not, it's just not run-of-the-mill contractors. And as you can see by the list of where the contractors came from, they came from a wide variety of states throughout the West.
Right.
So as I said, I just, I think it's a specialized thing. There's not, probably not a ton of this work out there all the time. So when they see something come up, they, I think they just jump on it. I wish I had a really good explanation for you on the, on the discrepancies in the, in the bids.
Okay. Well, super, I appreciate that, that input. I was just curious. And of course, when we get multiple bids, it's all to the benefit of the citizens of Prescott, so that's a good thing.
In our recent environment, it's a little unusual.
No question. Yeah, thank you.
Tim, what was the engineer's estimate of the cost?
Mayor, there was no engineer's estimate for this. There's no physical set of construction drawings for this, so there's no engineer of record. We provided the, in the bid documents, we provided the as-built, as-built of the original tank, so they could see the, what the, so they could measure out the tank, measure how many square feet and everything it was and all the features. And then we used the, basically the bid documents we used on the East tank as far as the coating procedures and the products that we, that were allowed to be used. But there is, there is no engineer of record associated with this project. And that's where our NACE Level Three Inspector comes in as overseeing the application.
So when we did the East tank, how much was that?
The total price on the East tank was, and I'm going to, I think I'm pretty close. It was like $3.2, $3.4 million total for the entire construction of the tank, as well as the, the coating that was installed at the time. But as we all know, it's, it was five years ago and I don't think we'd get that tank built for $3.2 now.
That's almost ancient history these days.
Sure.
All right, any other questions or comments? Any public comment?
No, mayor.
All right, we'll entertain a motion on this one.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2022-187.
Motion and a second?
Yeah.
Please vote.
Passes six, zero.
Additional one, mayor.
And, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2022-188.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes six, zero.
Okay. All right, moving on to item nine H.
Approval of city contract number 2017-064A10, an amendment to city contract number 2017-064 with Fan Contracting for solid waste hauling services.
Good afternoon, mayor and council.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Ian Mattingly, Public Works. So, approval of this item will authorize city staff to amend an existing contract, 2017-064, with FAN Contracting for hauling, solid waste hauling services in fiscal year '23, and by contract extension, fiscal year '24 to '27, to cover the cost incurred to transport waste and recycle materials from the transfer station. The Solid Waste Division uses contracted hauling services to transport waste and recycle materials taken in through the residential and commercial collection, also taken to the transfer station. And we transport those to Gray Wolf Landfill and the Phoenix Murph, respectively. Our contract, which was originally approved in fiscal year '17, has steadily increased from $735,000 per year to $1.2 million per year. That happened back in fiscal year '21, and we've been at 1.2 each year since. This amendment is requesting the same amount, 1.2 million, per year to continue funding this hauling service. The current contract with FAN has been extended through March 31st, 2022, through March 31st of next year, 2023. And future funding authorizations in fiscal year '24 to '27, approved today, will be used upon contract extension between the city and our hauler. With that, I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
Questions or concerns? Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Ian, I'm just curious, the increase from $730,000 now up to 1.2 million, is that due to volume or just due to rising costs or a combination of both?
Yeah, so we're on amendment number 10. We started this contract in '17. So primarily, we've had stepped increases through the years. It's primarily just a matter of more material coming in primarily. There's also CPI adjustments built into the contract. So, you know, we are experiencing fuel surcharge increases, but primarily it's just an increase of overall volume. We just have a growing population and just more recycle and more trash to take. So we just simply have adjusted that. And again, I'm not asking for an adjustment in the cost this time. We're just continuing our 1.2 million that we've been doing since, for the last fiscal year '21 and this current year, and just continuing that. So we're currently covering our costs.
Yeah, I thought it was kind of noteworthy that the tonnage had increased 50% over five years. That's a pretty big increase.
Yeah. And I will just remind everyone that obviously we bring in revenue when we increase our tonnage, and we give in new customers. We're bringing in more money. So the cost isn't, you know, it's not a out-of-pocket cost. It's just a transference of our revenue and our expenses.
Very good. Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2017-064A10.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thanks, Ian. So now we're down to 9I.
Approval of multiple contracts associated with the Airport Ruger Road Sewer Trunk Main Project as follows. Number one, approval of city contract number 2022-189 with FAN Contracting, Inc., for the upsizing Phase 1 project. And number two, approval of city contract number 2022-001A1, an amendment to city contract number 2022-001 with Lion Engineering and Surveying, Inc., for post-design services.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tim Sherwood, Public Works. Good to see you again. This project is to, the purpose of this project is to accommodate future wastewater flows in the airport area and surrounding properties. The city's current model identifies the installation of a new 30-inch trunk main to replace the current 10-inch trunk main that goes throughout that, in that area. Phase 1 will begin at the Airport Water Record Leavement Facility over here in this corner and in kind of at the southeast border of the airport. As you can see here, this is the new FedEx facility. The 10-inch, current 10-inch trunk main runs through that property. We are realigning the new proposed 30-inch trunk main around that property. In future phases, we will take this trunk main across the airport and then down Ruger Road to the north, the north, kind of the northeast end or west end of the airport along the area of Deepwell Ranch. The area through the airport will be done in conjunction with the airport expansion, the airport runway expansion. The project also includes the widening and lengthening of Melville Road from the Corsair Roundabout up to just around the northernmost driveway at the new FedEx Center. This project also includes a post-design services contract with Lion Engineering in the amount of $121,560. The project was advertised in March of 2022. We only received one bid. Public Works is recommending the award of the bid to FAN Contracting in an amount of Our engineer's estimate for this project was $3,112,670. Staff has received written confirmation of the bid from FAN Contracting. Verification of license, bonding, references, and past performance of previous municipal projects has been completed and deemed satisfactory. The city's standard construction contract will be used for this project, and funding for this project is budgeted in FY22 and FY23 from the wastewater fund. And with that, I will take any questions.
Pretty close. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Yes, you mentioned this is Phase 1. Can you maybe tell us how many more phases you expect and what the total cost of this realignment will be?
We anticipate two more phases. And if I, if we did it off today's dollars and kind of backed out the Melville component of it, we're very similar distances. The next section that goes along Ruger Road to the north is slightly. It could change by tomorrow, but that would be my anticipation at this point.
And then for the third phase, you expect another $3 million?
Yeah, the third phase would be from, like I said, from where it comes out, where it exits the airport property on the north side to the, to the west, going towards Ruger and Deepwell Ranch.
So probably a total of, what, 10 million at least?
I think it's probably a little bit less than that, Councilman.
Thank you.
Big numbers these days.
Yes, they are.
Any other questions or comments? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2022-189.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
And I move to approve city contract number 2022-001A1.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, we'll move on to item 9J.
Approval of city contract number 2022-157A1, an amendment to city contract number 2022-157 with FAN Contracting, Inc., for the fiscal year '22 pavement rehabilitation project, Phase 2.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tim Sherwood, Public Works. This project was originally awarded by council back on March 8th to FAN Contracting. The amendment we're looking for today will provide funding for additional pavement removal and installation on Rainbow Ridge. I'll get you a little bit better map here, guys. This is a little clearer picture. The areas in green are the streets that were awarded by council on March 8th. The areas in something close to orange there are the areas we're looking to take care of with this amendment. It includes Rainbow Ridge from Autumn Oak Way to Eagles Haven Circle, and also on Autumn Oak Way to Brandywine Circle over here. And it will include Autumn Oak Way, which is this cul-de-sac, or, I'm sorry, Windermere Circle, I apologize. Windermere Circle to this cul-de-sac right here. The project will also include any necessary curb gutter replacements, utility adjustments. And we're looking at approximately additional 7,800 square yards of additional pavement for this project, and we're looking for a not-to-exceed amount of $325,000. Funding for the amendment is budgeted in FY22 in the Streets Fund. And I will take any questions.
Mayor Protem.
I have a question about this project. There was some community concerns about removal of planters and trees. Was that resolved?
Yes, I met with the residents of the cul-de-sacs that were affected, as well as the HOA last Friday afternoon. Director Ashley Couch was with us on a Zoom call, and I think we came to a very good resolution for it. We talked to the residents, understood their concerns, realized that perhaps we did not fully comprehend how much that meant to them. So we've, we had a couple cul-de-sacs that, they had already kind of gone in, not kind of, they went in to remove the vegetation. So we worked with the land, the property owners in those cul-de-sacs to replace that landscaping and then leave the islands in the cul-de-sacs.
Well, thank you for taking care of that.
Oh, no problem.
Councilman Moore?
Yeah, just a quick question. Was this amendment not in the original scope of work? Is that why you're coming back? Because we just approved it recently?
Yes, sir. As we've been going further along in the budget process, we had a couple of projects that ended up not getting bid or awarded. And so we had some extra funds in the Street Fund. So with our construction contracts, we're allowed a little bit of leeway. So we went out, myself and our project manager went out and identified some areas that we could do some additional paving. I think this gives us some good stopping points for when we pick up the next go-around, say, on Autumn Oak Way or Fox Hollow Circle. So it just allows us to move a little further with the work we're going to ultimately have to do out here.
Yeah, I know, those are some pretty rough areas up there as far as the impact of weathering and just kind of breakdown slopes, all those kinds of things. So do you anticipate a, kind of a long-term rehab project up there in the ranch?
Yes, sir. That's our goal, is to kind of work east side and west side, depending on the age. We'll go, obviously go to the older streets first. The newer phases will be a little bit less and kind of work our way out of the ranch. Probably some sections of Lee Boulevard will be some of the last stuff we do. We don't want to, we don't want to go in here and do a road and then do a road adjacent to it where we're going to run all that construction traffic over it. So we want to kind of have a flow to it so that we get out of the subdivision without doing any damage to the roads we've already improved.
So how, how many years do you think it'll take before you get back up to a pretty?
We kind of have a five to seven-year outlook for this, and a lot of that will depend on funding and how far our funding goes. We've got some major streets in town that are starting to show some serious wear, and we're going to have to address those. And as we move forward with those, it may park some of the smaller streets for short term. I'm not, I don't think it's a long-term problem, but it could push them back just a little bit.
Understood. Any other comments or public comments?
No, Mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2022-157A1.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Now, we're moving on to item 9K.
Adoption of resolution number 2022-1818.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I would like to request that before we tackle the water policy, that we address the city ordinance first, item 9L.
Yeah, I know, this was brought to my attention. There seems to be a necessary alignment between the issue of 9L and 9K. I think our city attorney brought that wording to our attention. So can we have a description of what our concerns are?
I'm rapidly going down my list to find the order.
Okay.
We're going out of order.
It's on page 183, 182.
So initially, there was some concern brought to our attention through the public regarding how.
It's not open.
Section 2-1-8C1A was written, in particular with intergovernmental agreements. There was some concern there that the language wasn't strong enough to exempt out water improvement districts or other specially created districts. So that was changed for your review today. And it adds the language that the city will not enter any intergovernmental agreement for water service outside city limits with water improvement districts or other specially created districts. So that is a change that you'll see. There was also some indication rather recently that at least some members of the council wanted to see that subsection C1 be tightened up a little bit because the policy allowed for administrative reviews for water under, was it 1 acre foot?
Yes.
And then there now is a concern that all provisions of water outside the city limits should require council approval instead of administrative approval. And that kind of goes into those one-offs on that subsection B where we added the language, that single-family residential dwelling units that connect to a city water main, but they're outside the city limits, can apply for water. So there's no change there. There's interest in multiple council members in amending this particular code section. And I'm going to leave it up to you guys to now fight it out. Let me stretch them.
I'd like to just go.
Nano Clerk, you may want to start writing quickly. I'm going to try to keep up with it.
I would just like to say that, I would just like to add one sentence on paragraph B. Any provision of water outside the city limits made pursuant to this section must be approved by the Prescott City Council and may not be administratively approved.
So this is on page 183 of your packet. And it's the paragraph at the very top. So adding this additional clarification to that makes it very clear that administrative approval of such a request has to go in front of the city council.
Even for one single dwelling, is that what I mean?
Yes.
Single-family residential dwellings.
I think that in the interest of transparency and public input, we just deliver the message that it will have to go before city council for discussion. And I anticipate most of our applicants are probably going to be single-family, one lots. And so I don't think we're going to have too many opportunities to discuss, but if we do, I just would feel more comfortable not having it done administratively.
Well, I think when you look at the other reference, when we vote on 9K, you'll see that this, by having this amendment to 9L, that 9K will also be in similar alignment.
Mayor Protem Rusi, could you please restate the addition specifically that you want?
Okay. Here's the amended language.
Read it very slowly, please.
Okay. I'd like to add a final sentence. Any provision of water outside the city limits made pursuant to this section 2-1-8C1B must be approved by the Prescott City Council and may not be administratively approved.
Okay, so I have Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen, I have a question for you regarding House, and this is not a question I've already asked you, so I apologize. But in relation to this amendment that Mayor Protem is suggesting, you, at a previous water issue subcommittee meeting, suggested that the bulk of requests that you receive for water outside of city limits are single-family homes that are abutting a city main and sewer system. How many of those requests do you imagine we would receive that would have to go through this process? Just ballpark it for me, if you can.
Well, you have to take into consideration, Councilman Montoya, that, you know, when people connect, they have to abandon whatever they're currently using. There's cost to them to that, and they would have to pay development impact fees to tie into the city's system.
Yeah, but I'm not saying that.
So I'm not expecting a rush.
Sure, yeah.
On this sort of thing. I mean, we get, you know, maybe half a dozen inquiries a year. But whether people would actually act on it or not, I don't know, because there would be a cost associated with that.
Okay, so we're talking realistically maybe 12 or so people a year that would get thrown into the process and?
I'd be surprised if you saw two or three in the first year.
Okay. That's good to know. Good to know.
That's the way we looked at it, too. I didn't see a particular administrative burden or a burden to the council to have to look at this. So again, once we have this new water policy enacted and we have the ad hoc committee reviewing it, if it turns out that we have unexpected burdens either on staff or on council, we have the ability to modify those as well.
I just had no idea what the universe, the size of the universe was, so it was helpful to know. Thank you, Gwen.
So Mayor Protem, did you already have your question answered?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
So we're going on to Councilwoman Hall.
Thank you. I guess I'm just trying to understand this step. So we're pretty much specifically talking about a change for single-family homes.
Yes.
Is that the request? Okay. So what would be the motivation to try to make it harder or make an extra step for someone who's looking to abandon a well and get on city water? Because that would most be, almost all of the situations, I believe, would be getting off of a well and onto water.
Do you have an answer to that?
Well, I.
Let me.
Well, no, my question is directed to the council.
It's a, I think that the argument that the Mayor Protem made was a transparency argument. I don't think it's a city process or service delivery answer. It's completely a discussion about transparency and whether or not something should be administratively approved or something that council should approve.
And it's purely a policy question, you know? It's not a legal issue, so. We'll allow whoever wants to make that proposed change to kind of defend the position if she wants to or if not.
Counselman Shishka.
I'll defer my comments, Mayor.
Counselman Danny.
I just want to ask kind of the same question. What are the circumstances under which we would not want a single-family dwelling adjacent to the city limits to tie into water and sewer? I'm not sure why we would be.
This is not to prevent that, it's just to.
I'm not sure why we would need to vote on it at all in these one-off situations with a small, with a single property owner.
I just think they probably need to be looked at. And if there's such a rare instance, I know I've been contacted by a couple of different property owners that are kind of confused about what their responsibility is to tie in, how much cost is involved, and whether the city should be bearing that burden or the property owner should. So I think when those types of issues do come forward, we have a chance to hear them and then make a decision. Otherwise, it happens completely administratively. And then sometimes we get comments after the fact that the administrative decision was not fair. I mean, I'm dealing with that one right now.
Sure, yeah. I guess in that case, we might want to dig deep into all of our administrative decisions if there's concerns about how the public might react to them. We've got hundreds and hundreds of things, and the city council can't react directly to all of them. This seems like a minor issue that would be a slam dunk in.
Well, it's not minor if it involves water.
Well, if it's, okay. I mean, I can't think of a scenario in which it wouldn't be beneficial to the city and the property owner. I guess I'm just confused why we would need this extra step, but that's fine. Other people see it differently, that's totally okay.
All right, do we have any other comments or public comments?
I had my light.
Oh, all right.
Sorry.
Someone more, sorry.
I'm just thinking of what you just expressed, how you have people coming to you and asking you these questions, but it's not our position as council members or staff, as council members, to answer those questions. It's the staff's, you know, what does it entail? What are the costs? What needs to be done? I'm not going to be answering those questions as a council member. That's going to be going through city staff. So I don't see why this council needs to be involved in this. I think it should be, city staff should be involved in this.
Well, city staff will be involved with it, and it would be brought to the council to review that decision on a rare basis. So usually, these things are very strange parcels, maybe have a long distance to the water main.
I guess if it's a rare basis, I'm just not even sure why we're spending time on it if it's a rare basis. I mean, pardon me?
Oh, or future time. Not even just now discussing it, but it running up in more time for people who are trying to connect to the city water.
Well, like I said, it gives more transparency and more public input, and I feel that it's something that the public would support. So that's why we're asking for it.
Counselman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. So we're dealing right now with L, basically water outside of city limits, and the conversation about one-offs basically, you know, is, to me, not an issue. And I think that administratively approved, you know, I got to tell you, if everything comes to council, that's really wasting our time, to be honest with you. I know it's open to the public, but I just think that the public, in a lot of cases, could care less about one house close to a city water line and sewer line. But I'd like to address the larger situation of water outside of city limits, and then I'd like to make an amendment. Choice is such a desirable word in our society, and yet we're going out of our way to shut down choice for this council. We're trying to protect this council and by extension Prescott from this council. This is not wise and makes no sense to me. Shutting down Prescott's options is not going to help solve the problems in this AMA. In fact, it's going to exacerbate them as well as the traffic problems created by shoving inevitable growth into less water efficiency surrounding communities and the county. Prescott is the leader in this area in water management, and by its efficient example can inspire the surrounding entities to work for water efficiencies. Or it can build a wall around itself and it's every man for himself. Let's not let politics and campaign promises take the place of common sense. So can I make a motion right now, Mayor, or was I speaking out of turn?
I think you are. We're only looking at this particular recommendation for an amendment on this particular item.
Okay. And there may have been public comment. I saw a lot of people running up with blue cars. So you may want to take that before kind of moving forward. But right now, there is no motion on the floor. I think you're arguing one position, you're arguing a different position.
Yes.
Which is kind of the crux of the matter, right? It was always going to come down to.
Let's listen to the public comment, and then we'll decide whether we'll move forward with a motion to amend or not.
Okay. Leslie Hoy. And she's here.
Yay.
Thank you, Regina. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I didn't expect such a warm welcome, but it's wonderful, and I'm so happy to be back. I need to clarify, are we making a comment now just on?
Just on L.
Is on all of L or is it just on this?
On the ordinance.
Is it just on your amendment to the ordinance or is it on?
Item, you can comment on anything related to item L.
Okay, and then I, but I can't come back up, so. Okey-dokey.
You can come back up for K.
Okay, good.
Go to that one.
Okay, thank you. I feel like if I were a psychologist, which I am sort of an amateur one, this whole discussion is not really getting to the point of what we're really trying to talk about here today. And I'm trying to figure out who's thinking what, but I don't really have time to do that completely. As to Mayor Protem's suggestion, I support that suggestion because it, as the mayor said, this is really about transparency. And to me, it's also about water awareness. Every time that we talk about these issues and we talk about them in public, it increases the awareness of how important water is to our community and to the future. I also wanted to, just in case, because I've seen Mr. Mechanic in the audience, he's probably going to come up here and say the thing he's been saying for two or three months about water outside the city limits. I just want to point out that Seawag hydrologist Peter Krupnick has been running the new ADWR models, and we just found out, I found us out yesterday from him, that the accumulative overdraft is 650,000 acre feet. That is very serious. And every time we give water to another home, we're increasing the overdraft because we cannot recharge every drop that every home uses. It's bad enough that we're doing, we have to do that every time. But when we're doing it without annexation, which is really what this is about, it's not about just giving water outside the city limits, it's about doing it without annexation. If the city annexes, then there is a host of other benefits to the city, we hope, which we are supposed to be examining that before we annex. So trying to deliver water outside the city limits without annexation at some distance from where the infrastructure is and without, well, there's just so many reasons not to do it. So I hope that today we will approve this ordinance and that we'll go on to approve the water policy, too, because both are really a big step for this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Howard Mechanic?
Counselor and Mayor, and I'll start responding to a couple of points from Ms. Hoy. Over the last few months, I have responded repeatedly about this issue of overdraft. I'm not into increasing our overdraft. If we connect to properties outside the city limits and collect their recharge, we are helping reduce the overdraft. If you consider how many homes are expected to be built on that property out in the county, I've presented that before. I'm not into increasing the number of units just because somebody gets city water. The city needs to negotiate with each property owner to benefit the aquifer, to help manage growth, and to maximize benefits to the city of Prescott and the community. I just wanted to clarify one thing, Mr. Mayor, as far as procedure here, because we're able to comment on all of item L at this time. And I understand Mr. Shishka is going to make an amendment, where we still have an opportunity to comment on whatever amendments come up.
Well, we'll be talking, most of the comments here are really related to K more than L. So we're considering L, just L, at this time.
So we'll have opportunity, before you vote on any amendment from Mr. Shishka, the public will have an opportunity to comment on any new amendment.
We're just talking about the ordinance right now.
Yeah, that's why I was asking if I'll have a chance later to comment on whatever motion Mr. Shishka brings up.
Well, there will be public comment before any vote.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's up to the mayor.
His amendment's on L.
Yeah.
You'll have to comment from the same person on that same.
Again, I think it's up to the mayor. I think in fairness, certainly you'd want to hear from the public.
I appreciate that. And for months, we've heard from some that all water deals outside the city limits besides annexation are bad. We've even heard that they could lead to catastrophes. I appreciate that some people have changed their mind and have added single-family homes. So maybe it's not that bad to provide water outside the city limits. What about a duplex? What about a fourplex? What about anything that comes to you? Why can't you make a decision? We know it's incorrect that all deals are bad. You know the AED deal, which provided water outside the city limits, was a good deal. And we can think of other potential deals that could be good for the city in terms of growth management, water management, and maximizing benefits to the community. So my question is, why would you want to tie your hands and prevent the city from doing what's right on an individual basis? If somebody's coming in with a bad proposal, wants to increase the overdraft to a huge amount without benefits to the city, reject it.
Please conclude your comments.
After thinking about this considerably, I believe the answer is fear. Fear that a majority of council will make a bad decision. I think each of you think you can make a good decision. So do you think there's three other council members? Look around. Are there three other council members?
Thank you, Mr. Mechanic. Time's up.
Thank you.
Ralph Hess.
I just have a couple of questions about the ordinance that you're considering. I looked through the policy, and I don't see the answer to these questions either in the statute or in the policy, but I'll only address the statute, our proposed statute today. Now, under PCC 218B, you're requiring, well, any connection to really return 75% of the water usage to recharge. And my question that I don't see the answer to is, what if the customer fails to return 75%? What's going to be the remedy that the city's going to impose upon the user? Will the remedy be the same for all? Is it going to be uniform remedy? Is it going to be specific to particular users? And what will that remedy be? With regard to PCC 218C1B, which we've been discussing, I don't have any comment about the proposed amendment, but in looking and requiring a user to abandon its, the user's wells in return for water, city water service, what will happen, again, if the person doesn't return 75% of its water to recharge? Will they be denied water service and then also have no recourse for an abandoned well? So how will they get water? And I didn't see an answer to that. Regarding PCC 218C1A, where you're talking about these intergovernmental agreements, it looks to me like it sets forth a disparate treatment of political subdivisions of the state. And I understand that there was a modification of the previous provision to actually delete that phrase from the provision. But what it now provides is water pursuant to an IGA to a number of federal, state, and local governments, or governmental entities, except water improvement districts or specially created districts. So what is the valid rationale to exclude water improvement districts but not other governmental entities? What's the criteria? Is it just their status as a particular type of governmental entity? Because the city in this case is acting as a proprietary role since it's, these users are going to be outside the city limits. So what's the rationale? And what's the criteria that's going to be used to determine which IGAs to honor and which ones to not agree to? So, and then. So, and then.
Conclude your comments.
Okay, with a, the other question I have with that is, will a developer outside city limits be able to contract with a federal, state, or local governmental entity to subsequently enter that permitted governmental entity, to enter an IGA with the city to obtain water service for the developer from the city through one of these governmental entities that you're permitting? Thanks.
Thanks. All right, any other comments?
That's all for now, Mayor.
You're getting off easy so far.
I just want to make a quick comment. That it seems kind of interesting that what Howard Mechanic is saying is that we should be able to provide water outside city limits. And that's exactly what you're proposing by saying the city's going to allow people outside the city to get water with this amendment that you're making, that the city council will be making that very same decision that he's advocating for, and that you're opposed to that position of providing city outside the city. So I, I want to point out the disparity between the conversation that is occurring today, that we've got a council that is saying, we don't want to provide city outside city limits, but we want to have the ability to provide water outside city limits. And we're going to be the ones making that decision, not the staff.
Well, I believe Section B limits, limits it to one single-family residential dwelling unit or a single parcel of land.
Outside the city limits.
Yes, but like, for example, if their well is failing and they're having to haul water, like, I call this like a mercy annexation.
But they have to be adjacent. I mean, people's wells are failing, probably aren't right along that line where the water and sewer are readily available. They're going to be on the perimeter. So I just feel like we're trying to make exceptions that maybe just don't apply, and we're being somewhat hypocritical in our own policy.
Well, we didn't want to make it too draconian. And so I think this is a good compromise, like, for example, if someone's septic tank is failing and they're polluting the watershed, then we'll give them the option to pay to have the infrastructure to hook up to.
That seems like a simple staff decision.
So that's already in the, in the code here. And my amendment was just more about transparency and public input, to kind of make this a little more transparent, this code. I mean, if it's a big sticking point, you know, we can forget about it and just adopt it as it is.
Well, this would be a individual, one, one-time, individual dwelling unit where you have some real challenges, and without giving them consideration, they would stay on a septic and well. And they would be immediately adjacent to the, to the city and have the potential to tap into water and sewer. So I think when we consider some of those older developments that are very adjacent to the city, having a, you know, all or none decision eliminates the ability to make a specific individual decision that does make sense for the community.
Yeah, I would agree with that 100%, which is why I like it the way it's written. I don't even think it needs to come to council in those, in those rare situations that are, you know, again, very clear that there's a need for that, and it benefits the city, benefits the watershed, benefits the aquifer.
All right, we're back down to Mr. Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor.
Also on Montoya.
I guess my question, and Gwen, I, I know there's some notion in the water policy about this, where administrative approvals would factor into the reporting of, to the Water Issues Subcommittee related to the water budget, right? Am I, am I recalling that correctly?
That's correct, Councilman.
So I guess my question about these administrative approvals, is there a capacity for them, you know, presumably they would also be tapping into our water budget, would they also be reported on during that component?
Yes and yes.
Okay. So, so the reason I'm asking is because I, I guess, to a little bit of Councilman Tenny's point, I think. that we might be, be creating like so much oversight that it's like kind of an annoyance. And I would say that, in my opinion, it's potentially, we have this water policy, it's taken a lot of effort from a lot of different folks. A lot of the members of this council have spent a lot of time going over. I guess I would say that if I had my opinion about it, I'd say, let's move on the ordinance without, without Mayor Protem's amendment. And we're doing this, we do have reporting that will come into this. I imagine, given the length of time we've spent on this today, Gwen is not going to let it slip from a report about how much water has been awarded outside of the city limits administratively. And if she does, by some chance, as long as I'm on the Water Issues Subcommittee, I'll be asking about it, and I think she knows that, and I'm sure you will too, Mayor Protem. So I, I think, I think we adopt the ordinance as is, and we realize that the mayor, in his wisdom, has created a lot of oversight over this new water policy. That's just my opinion.
Councilman Shiska.
Yeah, Mayor, I would like to amend C1A. So I'd like to propose an amendment and make a motion at the same time.
I think, shouldn't, shouldn't my motion go first?
You didn't make a motion.
There's no motion on the floor. I mean, if you're done with debate, now might be the time to consider a motion.
Okay. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 2022-1787 with amended language to be added to 2-1-8C1A. By striking the last sentence and adding a new last sentence that reads, "The city will consider the provision of providing water outside the city limits where the city council determines that a particular development project benefits the city." Would you like me to read that again?
Please do, please do.
Okay, I move to approve ordinance number.
Slow, slow, slowly.
I'm sorry. I move to approve ordinance number 2022-187 with amended language to be added to 2-1-8C1A. By striking the last sentence and adding a new last sentence that reads, "The city will consider the provision of providing water outside of city limits where the city council determines that a particular development project benefits the city."
Okay, you have a motion.
Could I make a comment first?
Can we get a second before?
Give me a second.
Sir, a second to that motion. Hearing none, the motion fails. Okay, Mayor Protem, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I do, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 2022-1787.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt 2022-1787 as written.
So just to clarify, as written, without amendment, yes.
Right, no amendment. So we have motion as second. Any further discussion? Any public comment?
I don't have anything in the Zoom. Does anybody want to come back up? No. Okay, no.
Okay, motion, we have a motion as second, please vote.
Passes 5/2.
Okay, now we can go back to 9K.
Adoption of resolution number 2022-1818, adopting the 2022 City Water Management Policy, setting the water use estimates for calendar year 2022 from the Water Resource Management Model, approving a water budget for residential uses from January 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2022, and from July 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2022, and approving a water budget for non-residential uses from January 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2022, and from July 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2022.
We've got a lot of.
It's impressive.
Concerns to make here. Mayor Protem?
You want me to? Okay. I'm sorry. That was leftover.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question, Gwen, and I, this is the question I told you I would ask, and it's the same question I asked at Water Issues Subcommittee when you did the last presentation. And I'm not going to go verbatim what I said then, but more or less, my question is, does this proposed water policy, as it is written and presented before council today, provide better guidance to staff to approve water to city applicants and for the city to manage their water responsibilities?
Councilman Montoya, the policy as written certainly has more, more content, more direction than the current policy. And I believe that it will be easier for staff to administer with 22 separate policies when an applicant comes to us and has questions, we can point to specific policies within the policy. So the long answer is yes, or the short answer is yes.
Thank you.
Is that helpful?
Yeah, no, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Yes and yes, long and short.
Yes and yes.
Mayor Protem, who's seeing?
I'd like to bring everyone's attention to Attachment 5. We never really discussed this.
What page is that?
It's on page 172.
Thank you.
And Attachment 5 is the water application procedure, and it's very detailed. And if you come to paragraph 4, it's titled, "Outside City Limits With An Existing Contract." So this concerns property, doesn't matter how big it is. If it has, it might be outside the city limits but within our water service area. And who knows if there's a contract out there, and it might be a historical contract with a pre-existing contract to provide water. And a good example would be the Deepwell Ranch. If Mr. James hadn't have asked to be annexed, he had a historical contract. So he could have stayed in the county and requested city water because he had a, a previous agreement. So with that in mind, if you look at paragraph E, "Following staff review and approval of compliance with city codes and policies, the request will be administratively approved or scheduled for Water Issues Subcommittee and City Council for consideration, whichever is applicable." And we met with legal and asked them, asked Matt for his opinion about this because we had a concern that it might be approved administratively and would not have to come to city council, because it says, "The request will be administratively approved or whichever is applicable." And we felt that the language needed to be tightened up. So I would like to propose an amendment to this section and just change six words, reading, so that the request will be scheduled for Water Issues Subcommittee and City Council for consideration, just to kind of tighten that up.
And that.
So can I make a comment?
Yeah, sure.
So I, I was speaking with Matt Podraki earlier about this, Mayor Protem, and if you make that change, and you'll see here that I made the opposite change, and the reason I made it the opposite change is because of Policy 18. Let me just find it here, hold on. Sorry, I don't mean to make you dizzy. Let me just see if I can find it. Policy 18, let's see. Sorry, not Policy 18. Sorry.
It's the second sentence of Policy 18, I think you want to refer to.
That's part of it, but one of the other policies says that if they have an existing contracts, that their water would be approved administratively. And let me find that, existing contract. So Policy 15 says that water supplies associated with an existing contract shall not be amended to increase the number of lots of, sorry, that's not the right one either. My apologies, I have to find it.
And you mind if I go with my train of thought where you're looking?
Here we go. I, I got it, third time's the charm. Sorry, sorry. Thank you for being patient. So Policy 9 says, "Any property that holds a water contract to receive water will be required to submit a water service application. These requests will be reviewed and tracked administratively. All such requests shall be presented to the Water Issues Subcommittee and the council semiannually in January and July as a discussion information item and shall not be included in the water budget."
That says within the city limits, and Kathy was saying outside the city limits. That's the difference.
This is about outside the city limits.
Okay, then I apologize. Just want to make sure we're all on the same.
So I think then we're back down to 18 in the wording.
We're probably back down to 18. Commitments to serve water outside the city limits with, within existing contracts will be met. Again, it's an existing contract. The city has already agreed to supply water under whatever conditions are in that particular contract. So approval of council would put us, our Subcommittee and council would put us back in the same process that we're in today before we adopt this new policy.
Well, I just feel that in the interest of public input and transparency, that making this minor change would, I think, prevent a lot of problems in the future if we just are consistent and we just don't have the either/or. Because like I said, water is very important and controversial. And I think our elected officials should take precedence over administration, administrative approval.
We didn't know where 2118 was going to land, and it just landed. Okay? You just, you just passed it, okay? So the comments I made were, presuming there is an administrative review of all water outside of city limits, including those one-offs, then that, that language needed to be changed. What, I think what you just approved says that those one-offs, if they're under 1 acre feet of water, will be administratively approved. So the language as it's written now works. Had it been that 2118 was changed to not allow for staff or administrative review of water outside the city limits on those one-offs, then it would make sense to make that proposed change. Does that make sense?
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't. No, I think the way it's written now is the way you're, your, where your ordinance is written.
Okay, I agree.
Can I ask a clarification question, though? We're talking now about water outside city limits that have a pre-existing contract. And what we just approved, I don't believe actually referred to that. Am I, am I wrong about that, Matt? Help me out.
We're going to take a quick look.
I think we're actually talking about a different scenario here, and that said, I would still be in favor of the language as is. I think if somebody's got a contract for water.
Well, I know a couple of years ago, we found some contracts that we weren't even aware of. They kind of surfaced.
They do that.
Am I wrong?
You are not wrong, Mayor. They do that.
So having the council be included in the review of such contracts, I think is extremely important.
Is there legal basis for us to vote again on a contract that's already been passed, however? I'm just asking that question.
Depends on the terms and conditions of the contract.
Generally, no. You, you cannot impair an existing contract.
I'm not sure why we would vote again on something that's already been approved.
Well, some of those old contracts that surfaced were very vague in their wording.
And some of them probably also used measurements of water that we don't use anymore. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Gwen, but didn't we have one that had some very obscure like?
PSI.
PSI as opposed to like acre feet.
Yes.
So we, we would be, excuse me, I apologize. Oh, wait, Mayor, you can recognize me if you're interested.
I just think that having such a pre-existing contract that the owner of that contract brings forward, rather than have it administratively decided, that it should at least come to council for a review and consideration.
Also legal.
At least, it would go to the Water Issues Subcommittee.
Sure. Okay. Sure. Okay, so there are scenarios I'm hearing in, under which we might choose to invalidate a pre-existing contract and, and take on the, the potential legal burden that comes along with that. Am I framing that correctly?
Well, for example?
I mean, Matt?
Yes, I think you're framing it correctly. And one of the things Gwen and I talked about was just removing this in its entirety because you've got an existing contractual relationship, and there's nothing else for the council to do on it. Either this council or a previous council already approved it.
That was the point I was trying to make. I mean, and you haven't gotten to me yet, but.
Sorry.
We're all over the place.
Never mind.
Look over there. I never seen.
I know, you don't look at my light. You look at me, but you don't look down. But the point is, we just read in nine or 18 or whatever, that the city, there's already a contract for providing water outside the city limits.
We will follow that contract.
And we will follow that. That's in our policy. So this is kind of a moot point, I think.
It's superfluous, but it is, but it's, and it exists. This is pre-existing? It's a procedure, basically, for sort of the rank-and-file employee who sees somebody come in.
So this is the, this is what we hand to the applicant. When they came, come in and say, "I want to get water, what do I do?" One of these scenarios applies to them. They're either new, they're outside the city limits, they already have an existing contract. One of these scenarios applies to them, and this document, this attachment, is for staff's use. It's not the policy, it's just a guideline to tell the applicant what they will be required to do in order to receive water. That's what Attachment 5 is. It's basically an SOP for the staff.
Well, if in your legal opinion it's not needed to be modified, then we won't modify it.
Could I make a comment? I'd like to make one last comment.
Is it helpful for the staff to have it in?
Paragraph E is?
And again, it's, it's not, it's not a statute like the ordinance you passed. It's not even the policy. This is how staff handles people coming in asking for water.
It can easily be removed.
It can be removed, or it can stay. I think removing it's probably cleaner for everybody.
I think so, too.
You can remove it.
Well, let me present this scenario, like somebody has some agreement from like the 1940s and comes into the city staff. I mean, they're not a legal department, and they could just automatically approve it, even if it's not legal. And I'd like to see that extra step of transparency, public input, run it through the committees, city council, and have legal take a look at it, because who knows?
Legal's part of our staff, right?
Yeah, but if it's approved administratively, we'll never know.
Part of the administration is our legal department. I'm sure the water department could go talk to legal and say, can we authorize?
But they don't have to, right?
Not, we're not required to, Mayor Protem, but if in doubt, we always ask.
It's, it's the practice, I'd say.
It is.
If you've got an old, strange contract.
Can I ask a question? Gwen, if someone came to the Public Works Department with a contract dated like from 1907 and said, "You guys need to give me water," and like they had, like they unveiled their like scroll that it was written on, I imagine we'd take a closer look at that, I guess.
First thing we're going to do is send it to legal.
I mean, I'm just.
Just going to tell you right now, we're going to send it to legal and say, "Is this a valid contract?"
My, my opinion on this is personally that I think the deletion of this paragraph makes the most sense. And I think, to a certain degree, I understand some concern around administrative approval. And I think, from my assessment, that if staff has been paying attention to any of the meetings that have happened over the past six months, that they understand that there's increased scrutiny among the people who sit up here regarding administrative approval. And so I think, from my assessment, like, they're not going to just
Rubber stamp.
go rogue. I, I just, I'm not convinced of that, but I could be wrong. But I do think that deleting it is cleaner and makes more sense, and I, I'm particularly the rely on our legal advice here, which says that it's superfluous. To me, that means it's unnecessary and needs to be deleted.
I disagree. It's better than nothing.
Again, if you have existing contracts, there's really nothing to discuss beyond the terms of that existing contract. You cannot unilaterally change a contract, and, and we'll deal with those as they arise. And to the extent you get those strange one-offs of the contracts written in 1900, they're going to come to us as just a matter of course for review. So I, I think the cleanest way to deal with it is not to have the language in there at all, to the extent it may add some confusion to the staff who's following the procedures.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion to deal with that amended deletion.
Is there, was there more? That's like one small item on the whole thing? Or you think we're ready to go? We've talked about this enough, or?
So you're not seeking motions on?
It's up to the council.
On the whole policy, just, just item E.
We have a whole bunch of things here to do.
Yeah, I think we've got a lot more to talk about.
Yeah, I just don't know if I'm right.
So Mayor, and Matt, help me if I'm not doing this right. May I move that we amend our water policy under K. Subpart 4, to delete paragraph E.
Let me ask you this. Are you ready to make a motion to approve the water policy with that amendment?
I would be, but I've been told by Mayor we're not quite there yet.
Well, I think the very first action is the adoption of the resolution of the water management policy.
Mayor?
With the amendment.
I'm sorry, I'm a comment, so we can't do any of that yet.
Yeah, my point was, we've talked about that one specific issue. Was there more that the council wanted to talk about, about the overall policy? And I think this is a good time to do that. Probably a good time to do that now.
And that allows for the.
Hold your thought.
I will withdraw my motion.
The public.
Maybe write it down so you can read it, it's an entire discussion.
All right, then let's open up this to a public comment.
Leslie?
Good afternoon again. This might be premature, but I guess I'm going to read it anyway. I'm here to thank you, Mayor, and council and staff for all your time, effort, and patience in crafting this water policy, and I really appreciate your respect for public input as the policy moved forward. We've taken an important step, I hope, towards a sustainable water future, and now I'm looking forward to the conservation plan Gwen mentioned at a previous meeting. So thank you for this opportunity to comment, but let me just add, I submitted my own set of, you know, suggestions throughout this process, and some of them were accepted, which was very nice. It's not perfect, but this is so much more perfect than what we've ever had. And so I hope we can get through this, you know, and end up with this excellent policy without beating ourselves to death, because it's probably, there's going to be some further opportunities to fine-tune, which no doubt, since we're human beings and we have all the faults of human beings, we want to have gotten it perfect. But I'm not an attorney. The attorney probably can have a comment on how amendable it is from now on. But, you know, there comes a point at which we need to be really happy with the great work that we've done and, and move on to the conservation policy. Thank you, and have a great evening, but I'm going to stay to the end.
The bitter end. Ralph Hess?
Hello again, Ralph Hess, Prescott, Arizona. I don't have anything to add. I have the same questions I had during the previous agenda item that have been unanswered.
Councilman Shishka, you had a question?
Is public comment over? I can comment after public comment, Mayor.
Howard Mechanic?
I'm here, council, and I want to join Leslie Hoy in thanking the council for putting in so much time on this issue. It's a very important issue. One of the components didn't go the, the way I thought that they should go, but I'm glad it's behind us, and we can move on and work on some other issues. And there's only one comment I wanted to make. I didn't have time a month or so ago to get it in, but when you're soliciting public written comments, which I appreciated you did a couple months ago, they were never published. They were never posted, and I know somebody else I talked to wondered what happened with all the comments. I think they should be made public so we can see what questions people have, what suggestions they have. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Tom Rusing?
They were administratively approved.
I actually hadn't planned on saying anything, but I am kind of surprised that with an issue as controversial and as critical as water is to our community, and it's been shown, especially throughout the last few years, that the council would want to distance itself any from knowing exactly what's going on. And regarding previous existing contracts, there are a lot of contracts that have been poorly written and can be interpreted in different ways. So I think the council should be very hands-on on any issues that are regarding water and not find out that something happened and they didn't know. If I was on the council, I'd, I'd be very worried that if something like that happened. So I think, in my opinion, all of these things should come through the council, and if it's, most of them would take less time than we've discussed it here. And I think the council should be aware of what's playing out, even if the staff is taking care of it, and at least it should go to the Water Subcommittee, but Issues Subcommittee. So I think I would not, as a council member, want to be distanced from any of those discussions, and I would want to be aware of everything going on with our water supply. Thanks.
And Gwen, is, there's something in the existing policy that talks about bringing things back to the council every six months?
Yes, in the, in the proposed policy, we'll be bringing back, twice a year, we'll be bringing back the administrative approvals. We actually track them anyway, so it's not additional work for the staff. So we'll be bringing you back the total that we approve administratively, the total that we approve that's already in contract, and the total that we're approving through the council and subcommittee actions. So, and we'll post that information on our website as well. We've been asked to do that as well.
Pretty close eye on things.
Yeah, so basically, everything we approve will be on one of those lists. That's all, Mayor.
So, Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really sorry that I wasn't at the last Water Issues Committee meeting when we were discussing the water budget, but, you know, I look at, at the 25 acre feet, and pretty much what we're doing in a housing crisis is we're cutting out large multifamily units. If you look at a 200-unit apartment complex, it would, at point 12, that would be 24 acre feet. Well, we can't approve anything over half of any one project, over half of 25 acre feet, and we're not carrying over. So basically, what we're doing is we're sending those complexes out to Prescott Valley. But the jobs are in here, the professional jobs, pretty much. So when folks complain about traffic, we're sending more folks out to Prescott Valley so they can drive into Prescott for their jobs. And I'm just wondering about the I'm just wondering about how that's going to work out in the overall scope of things, Mayor. So I just needed to say that. I appreciate you letting me suck.
Councilman Montoya.
Steve, we did miss you at the Water Issues Subcommittee, by the way, but I understand you were having a good time in Ireland. So to respond a little bit to, to your comment, I guess, I, one of the things that came up when we were talking about this initial water budget, and I think Gwen addressed this pretty well previously, is that she feels fairly confident, and I had this conversation with her before the Water Issues Subcommittee meeting, and then we talked about this at that meeting, that this current budget, as outlined, will meet the current demand that she's experiencing through water applications currently, through the approval of this policy that we're going to adopt today and also going forward. And in the interim, we have an ad hoc committee, as well as the Water Issues Subcommittee, that will be able to come back to this council and say, you know, we are in a housing crisis, and it turns out there's a demand for more than 25 acre feet, you know, in a given period, and we need to adjust course. So I, I respect where you're coming from, but I think that it's important to realize that part of the well-crafting of this document was to allow room for revision. So that's just my comment.
Thank you.
Councilman Tenny.
So I, I share Councilman Shishka's concern broadly, for sure. I, I love Sedona, but I don't want to see us become Sedona, and I don't want to exacerbate traffic by pushing all of the high-density housing outside of Prescott. So that's, that's a broad concern for me, I think, unless I'm wrong, help me out, that may be addressed within this, we're looking at Policy 14, there's an appeals process for a project that would be using over 50% of, of the budget, that they could come to the city council and say, here's, here's what we've got. And under those circumstances, I'd be very inclined to, to look carefully at that, not obviously just say right here, I would approve anything that has multifamily housing, but it doesn't exclude that necessarily, I guess is what I'm saying. Can, can someone help interpret under Policy 2, excuse me, Policy 14, number 2? Is that essentially correct, that we could?
An appeal of the 50% rule, if you can demonstrate the benefit to the city.
Right, so we could still look at projects. Like, I'm totally with you that we don't want to be in a situation where we just push all of the, the high-density housing outside of Prescott forever. That just exacerbates an issue that we've got right now. I don't want to be one of those people who says, "I don't want that kind of housing in my town," and then I show up to the restaurant, nobody serves me, and I get mad about that, too. And I get mad about the traffic on my way home.
Thanks, Clark.
I agree. All right, anything else? So now we have a total of four actions that we have to take. We have to adopt the water policy, then we have to move on to a water use estimate, then we'll move on to approving a water budget for residential use, and then approving a water budget for non-residential use. So at this point, we can entertain a motion or a motion with an amendment on the first action.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2022-1818, colon, oh, I'm sorry, with no changes. Second.
Okay, we have motion and second. Any further discussion?
So, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify.
Me, too. There was no amendment.
No amendments.
Because do we, are, do you want to remove this section in?
Attachment 5.
Okay, so this motion, currently made with a motion and a second, would not remove that section. Just want to.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't want to move that, remove that section. I want to adopt it as, as it's written.
As written. I'm just making sure. There's been a lot of back and forth.
Can, can I clarify, then? Because I want to make sure that we do this procedurally correctly. Let's say, let's say I don't agree with this motion because I feel like that sentence E should be removed, then will we have an, I'm not, I don't want to decline the whole policy, I just want to remove that. So can we make another motion if that's, I don't know how the procedure?
So, Matt, I'll go, and then if I'm incorrect, you can. So if you vote yes for Mayor Protem's motion, you are approving the water policy as it is written.
Right.
Therefore, if you want that section removed, you would want to vote no on the motion as it stands.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, well, I have an opportunity.
Then, then someone can make a, a new motion.
Okay.
That approves it with some proposed amended language.
Or the other option would be to rescind the original motion and then go to adopted motion.
If somebody wants to suggest that Mayor Protem amend her motion to add for the removal of
Fails 3/4.
Mayor, can I make a motion?
Yes.
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2022-1818 with the following amendment. In Attachment 5, Part 4, we delete Paragraph E. Otherwise, adopt the resolution as written.
I'll also second this motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the amended motion. I did hear. All right, now, we're moving on to the second action, setting the water use amendments or estimates for calendar year 2022.
Mr. Mayor, I move to set the 2022 water use estimates as follows. Single-family residential equals 0.17 acre-feet per year per dwelling unit. Multifamily residence residential equals 0.12 acre-feet per year per dwelling unit. Landscaping equals 1.5 acre-feet per year per one acre.
Second.
Any public comment on that one?
No.
Okay, motion and a second, please.
Ready for Number 3?
Number 3, approving a water budget for residential uses from January 1 to June 30, 2022, and from July 1, 2022 to December 31, 2022.
At...
Mayor? May I?
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we set the residential water budget for January 1, 2022, to June 30, 2022, and July 1, 2022, to December 31, 2022, at 25 acre-feet for each period.
Second.
Oh.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Passes 5/2.
All right, now, we're moving on to Item Number 4, approving the water budget for non-residential uses.
Mayor?
Same two periods.
Mayor, I move to set the non-residential water budget for January 1, 2022, to June 30, 2022, and July 1, 2022, to December 31, 2022, at 25 acre-feet for each period.
Second. Oh.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Passes 5/2.
All right, now, we're moving on to Item Number 4, approving the water budget for non-residential uses.
Mayor?
Same two periods.
Mayor, I move to set the non-residential water budget for January 1, 2022, to June 30, 2022, and July 1, 2022, to December 31, 2022, at 25 acre-feet for each period.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 5/2.
Well, thank you all. Thank you all. This has been a long, long process. I mean, for all of you that have been debating and considering this over this period of time, I started working on it three months before you guys did. So, I think this is a monumental improvement to our water policy. It's not done completely. We'll still have the ad hoc committee to analyze how well this is working. And I want to thank Councilman Tenny for mentioning the fact that even some of those concerns about hitting the 50% limit in each six-month period still has the opportunity to appeal that and bring it forward to the council, should there be a particularly valuable developmental agreement brought to the city. So, I'm just very, very pleased that we have a chance to finally kind of restore some deliberate and measured way that we utilize our water to be able to manage our growth in a way that doesn't overwhelm our public safety services and our general services throughout the city. So, I want to thank you all for your patience and your understanding and your study and your review to get to this point.
May I?
Mayor Protem Rusing.
Yes, thank you. And I'd like to thank everyone also for all their hard work, city staff. This has been quite a process, but I think, in the long run, this water policy will make our city more attractive to... For people to come and raise their families and start businesses, because they know that we will be managing our water sustainably and will be preserving it for future generations.
Well, thank you very much. Normally, I close the meeting with some form of a quote, but I just want to make sure that we keep our eye on the fire activity, and we say a prayer to make sure that our firefighters and our public safety personnel that are involved in this fire are safe, that our residents stay safe, and that protection and providence that we certainly hope for will continue. I think I mentioned before, I wish I would have known the chaplain who gave General Patton his weather prayer. We could certainly use it now, because it really depends on the wind and the humidity. But I think we're doing the absolute best we can with all of our agencies working together in a cooperative manner. And we'll have to leave it in God's hands at this point. So, this meeting is adjourned.
Brandon, do you have five minutes?
Yeah.
Matt?